Okay, with that, I am going to call the January 25th, 2024 meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I am Lisa Ellsworth. May I get the roll call, please?
Uh, Vice Chair Hernandez Mahia.
Here.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Bravo?
Here.
Commissioner Corning?
Here.
Chair Ellsworth?
Here.
And I have three excused absences from Commissioner Bartel, Commissioners Bartel Berlin and Lassen.
Okay, and we can confirm that we do in fact have a forum at this time. So will you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting? And are there any additions, corrections, or modifications? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move the minutes be accepted as presented.
I second.
Okay, I will have a motion in a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, motion carries to approve the minutes. So tonight, do we have any business from the audience that is not otherwise on our agenda? Hearing none, we will just move on. Any communications from staff?
None at this time.
Okay. So you may remember that at the January 11th, 2024 meeting of the Planning Commission, we had a hearing on DR 23-08, SA 23-05, and VAR 23-06 regarding Gating Pacific. And that hearing has been closed, and at this point, we're going to open for deliberation. But I do see in front of us, we have a memorandum from Dan Handel. If you-
Thank you Chair. Before we get to that, I believe we need to do some declarations. Is that correct?
Okay.
That's correct, yes.
Declarations now, before Dan speaks.
Any uh-
Thank you. So, since our last meeting, has there been any ex parte contact?
No.
Nope. Any site visits?
No.
Or anything else that needs to be declared before we start deliberating?
None.
None?
Do we have? I'm sorry, I was gonna say, do we have any challenges to the declarations, for lack thereof? Okay, hearing none, now I'm gonna ask Dan about this memorandum that we have.
Thank you Chair. I sent this out via email late last week, and I have it brought up on the screen here for those of us who are online. And I'll just kind of run through it quickly. As you summarized earlier, we had the public hearing at our last meeting on the 11th. We heard all the testimony, and the public hearing testimony portion was closed at that meeting. The deliberation and decision were continued to tonight's meeting. So this memo, staff put together based on testimony from the applicant and some of the questions that the commissioners had asked at the previous meeting. And this is proposing some modifications to conditions of approval. Just a quick refresher, the project proposes a 22,600 square foot industrial kind of warehouse building at the front of the property and some associated site improvements. The conditions that staff is recommending be modified through this memo cover the relocation of an existing monument sign in the right-of-way, as well as some uh- Well, that's, that's condition 5A, is the monument sign. Relocating that monument sign. Condition 8 talks about upgrading existing exterior lighting onsite and as well as meeting our current code requirements for any new lighting. So any existing and new lighting would meet current code requirements. This memo is requesting or recommending that condition be struck, same as the signage condition. We're recommending modification to condition 11. This is associated with the front street improvements. That includes street lighting, pavement for the street, sidewalks, street trees, things like that. The recommendation is to modify this condition to instead have the developer enter into an improvement agreement. So this was something that both the applicant and the commission seemed interested in at our last hearing. In 2019, this site had an approval issued for an expansion that included a similar improvement agreement. That improvement agreement was specific to a sidewalk along the frontage and then some, some private facilities in the right-of-way, so that monument sign, the fire vault, the water meter. This modified condition 11 would be either a similar improvement agreement or a modification to that existing agreement to cover a broader set of street improvements that previously the condition recommended a fee in lieu for. On that line, we're also recommending striking condition 12, which talks about the waterline facilities that I just mentioned, that fire vault, the water meter that are in the right-of-way. The condition, as it's currently written, would require those to be relocated right now as part of this project. The modification is recommending that be struck because it's already covered in an improvement agreement to have them relocate that in the future. Condition 13 talks about the existing power lines that are above ground along North Front Street in front of their property. The current condition requires a fee in lieu for that, those power lines to be buried and/or relocated in the future. The recommended modification is to, again, have that as part of an improvement agreement. And then a couple minor tweaks to public works conditions in the same line as the other other modifications here. And again, this is all based on what staff thinks we heard from the last meeting. This memo's been presented to the applicant. They've had a chance to review it, and they've indicated to staff their acceptance of it. They're supportive of those changes. So that's the memo. Again, you're just deliberating tonight. There's no testimony portion. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Dan, can I just add something? Do you have a motion you can put up if they wanted to?
Absolutely.
Suggested motion. And again, it's a bit unusual that staff sort of, sort of takes in what we heard from the last hearing, listens to a little bit of what the Planning Commission talked about. And what we tried to do is essentially what this does, and Dan has all the details far better than me, is it says that all the public improvements that we require under the code for this development, instead of being due typically as a typical our building permit, would be sort of held in abeyance until such time as either the city did a project in front and completed the improvements up to it, then the property would be subject to making those improvements or paying a fee. Or if the neighbor did a large project and they brought it up to it. The site's a little isolated from the rest of the city, sort of stands on its own. That's what makes it a bit unique, and it's the reason staff would be supportive of this modification. Still gets the city what they need, but it says that essentially if the improvements don't ever catch up to that, their frontage, they wouldn't have to put them in. Thanks, Dan.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Well, we're free to deliberate. Does anyone have any comments?
I, I think Dan captured what we were discussing at the end of the last meeting before we postponed the discussion.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree. I, that's kind of where my heart was at, at this one. I'm glad that staff kind of took it and made it easy for us, and so, I mean, but for me, I'm completely on board with what, what they put together.
Commissioner Hernandez Mahia, do you have any comments or any deliberation to, to share?
It would pretty much be the same. Again, it's been covered, and if everybody's been satisfied with that, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay, I am. The one thing that I'd like to point out, and I think that Chris alluded to it very well, this is not something that I think I would normally support. Certainly, this came up with the other applicant on Young Street. One of the reasons we took a harder line on Young Street had to do with the fact that the neighbor was building and our requirements were beginning to move along Young Street. And those operations were taking place in the here and now. This is, like, like you said, at the end of the, the boundary, and at some point in the future, quite frankly, costs are gonna be a little bit higher, so when the future building takes place, it does make sense. We may find that we need to move a line or something else, so doing this work up front right now doesn't make sense to me. So I'm willing to do this, not necessarily to set a precedent, but to say, look, this does make sense. So I'm also grateful that the, the applicant and staff have been able to come up with something that meets the city's needs, meets the applicant's needs, and makes sense for the future, so. Do we have any other comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Should I read this, or can it just be printed out, or how does that work?
The bold up top here was my recommended motion. This was just a summary for your benefit at the bottom.
I move the Planning Commission approve DR 23-08, SA 23-05, and VAR 23-06 with the conditions recommended by staff in the staff report, except with the modifications outlined within the staff memo dated January 19, 2024. Summary of modifications, strike condition 8, granting approval of the exterior lighting variance. Strike conditions 5A and 12. Modify conditions 11 and 13 to require an improvement agreement. And for public works conditions, modify number 8 and strike number 9.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Hearing none, motion approved. Thank you. So tonight, we also have- Thank you.
Just like to thank all of you for the work you do for the city and the consideration we receive.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Tonight, we have another item under consideration. LA 23-04, which is a consideration of the updated Parks and Recreation Master Plan as well as associated amendments to the comprehensive plan. And we are looking at this to issue recommendations to the City Council. So, the hearing, purposes of hearing is to ensure that interested parties can offer relevant evidence to the council in a timely and orderly manner. With that, I'd like to go ahead and open the hearing for LA 23-04. At this time, let me ask the commission, do we have any conflicts of interest? Anything that would preclude you from being able to be fair and impartial in your deliberations? Hearing none, do we have any challenges to the declarations? Hearing done, I'm gonna ask for the staff report.
Turn it, turn it over to Dan to start, and then I'll feed off the hint.
Thank you. Chair Ellsworth, Commissioners, this plan, the Parks and Rec Master Plan, got introduced last month, mid-December. Consultant was, well, online doing the, just an overview PowerPoint of, of the process, how they got public input, all the research that went into putting this plan together. I emailed out the PDF version of the plan a month ago. For those of you here in the room, there's a binder copy as well in front of you. Please keep that here. Don't take it home. We'll, we'll recycle it for the City Council, but it is here for your benefit to look at while you're here. And tonight, we're doing the formal public hearing. Staff is requesting a recommendation of approval that will take to City Council. We have a tentative date for that hearing in February. I think it's the 11th.
Correct.
So with that, Community Services Director Jesse Cuomo's here, as well as consultant Steve Dew. They'll have more info to provide. My staff report basically goes through applicable state planning goals, our comprehensive plan, Oregon administrative rules that apply to this. Just confirming, we comply with all those rules and goals. I think Steve's presentation will be a little more interesting, and we welcome any, any comments, any suggestions, any questions you have for any of the content in the plan. There's also some associated amendments to our comprehensive plan, goals and policies. They're pretty minor. I can touch on that after, after the presentation, but anything else?
No, yeah, I just want to say, thank you so much, Chair Ellsworth and Commissioners, Jesse Cuomo, Community Services Director. I'll hand it over to our consultant, Steve Dew. As we've mentioned before, this is pretty well overdue. And so we just basically truncated the presentation we shared with you in December, just so we could kind of re, reestablish where we're at and as well as have it as part of the public hearing, and then open for any questions or comments as well. And I'll hand it over to Steve to fire up the PowerPoint and go from there.
Thank you, Jesse. Again, for the record, Steve Dew, Constellation Techniques Consultant with this project for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So, Dan, I see that you're running the PowerPoint, so if we could just, when you have a moment, get it going.
I get you to get a little bit closer to the mic, of course.
I can, yes, is that better?
Yeah.
So again, for this evening, this is a bit of a replay of the presentation that was provided last month. We did shorten it up a little bit. The intent is to just go over in high level the planning process, the structure of the plan, hit on the key recommendations, and next steps, and leave some time for Q and A. Again, as a reminder, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan is intended to be the city's 10-year guide and strategic plan for all things parks and recreation related to parks, open space, recreation programs, and other recreation opportunities for Woodburn. It does have goals and policies within it as also a capital project list that'll help guide future investments in the city. The community outreach process was robust and diverse. We were able to reach out to and connect with over 700 participants in the community through the process, which included a community survey, multiple open house events, tabling at community events, as well as stakeholder discussions and coordination with the Recreation and Parks Board. All right, you go for it now, Dan. So synthesizing what we heard from all of that community outreach and engagement, three core priorities for investments came forward. One is to improve and upgrade existing parks across Woodburn, expand trail opportunities, specifically Mill Creek Corridor, but also look for opportunities to add new recreation options for the community going forward through new park development and park renovation. The structure of the plan follows somewhat to the older previous plan, but it's also similar to a kind of a standard plan document. The first few chapters are the context, process, and inventory that really just lay out the steps we took to pull the plan together, a little bit about the community profile, and the current and proposed classification system for the different types of parks, community park, neighborhood park, open space, et cetera. The middle of the plan is the series of needs assessments, and those are structured by topic. So parks and open space, trails, recreation and events. Within each of those chapters, as a needs assessment, we look at recreation trends, what we heard from the community, and use those as ways to think about potential recommendations, improvements, and enhancements for Woodburn. Then the tail end of the, the plan document really is a synthesis of updated goals and policies as well as a series of recommended projects and capital project list, as well as ideas and strategies for implementation into the future. The, the plan also has a whole series of appendices to just provide background information for the future as people read and review this 10 years from now and say, did we get it right? In terms of the key projects, they do align with those core areas that I referenced earlier. So projects include things like looking for and expanding trail connections, primarily in Mill Creek Greenway Trail, and implementing multiple segments of that to extend and connect that across the community, as well as looking for future trail connection opportunities through either acquisitions, rights of way, or coordination with developers. Looking to enhance trailhead opportunities and upgrades for parking signage and access points. And also, long-term, looking at trail management and trail surface management. So making sure that the pavement's well cared for, and again, looking down the road as a 10-year plan, making sure the city is paying attention to those investments that it's making. Within park development enhancement, one core project is upgrading Saddle Meyer Park. And that would be in coordination with potentially the new community center project that would be at that site. But additional opportunities would include an all, all-access playground, splash pad, additional picnic areas, sport courts across different parks across the city, as well as looking to develop and enhance newer properties like the Dove Landing and Boone's Crossing sites to build those out as new neighborhood parks. Within recreation, one core capital project is the community center idea, and that's one we heard resounding feedback from the community, that there's still strong interest in having that building moved forward and having it funded. So that makes up a significant chunk of the capital project cost that I'll touch on in a moment. With the community center project, there would also be upgrades and enhancements to the Aquatic Center to bring that up to a comparable standard, and just make some renovations to lengthen the lifespan of that building. Additionally, some other projects include ADA enhancements and upgrades just to make sure users of all abilities have access to recreation opportunities across the city. Things like entries into playgrounds, benches and tables that are wheelchair accessible, and enhancements such as that. And then, again, looking down the road, looking for opportunities for additional acquisitions to fill gaps in the system, whether it's a gap for a smaller park, or gaps for trail connectivity, and enhancing signage and wayfinding and communications, so people know where things are and know how to get to them.
I want to declare, I didn't think of it earlier, but at one point, I was actually a part of the the committee related to the proposed community center. So I may have information that other commissioners don't have, but that was a couple years ago, prior to COVID, when it was put on hold, and I've not recently been part of the, the discussions. But I do have extra information about the community center and the things that were proposed, so just wanted to set that out there.
Having more information about something's always a good thing.
That's what I think.
That's good to hear.
If anyone were to question, I was a part of that initial planning committee.
Thank you. So just to touch on the, the capital plan, the improvement plan for the parks system. First off, it is intended to be a 10-year planning tool. It's not a budget per se. It's a list of potential projects that staff will work with the Recreation and Park Board and City Council to put into a budget into the future. So really, it's a list of potential projects that is a guide for future investments. Again, it includes planning level costs, kind of high-level costs, and proposed timelines for the different project types. In terms of how those costs break down, a very straightforward pie chart just illustrates the allocations across different project types. The community center project really does represent about two-thirds of the total cost that is represented in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So significant investment, but certainly worthwhile. And the remaining projects do align with what I also recently highlighted for trails, park improvements, acquisition, and other investments for renovations and upgrades. The next step is, as was noted earlier, a tentative date with City Council for a formal approval of the plan for February 12th. And with that, I'll turn it back to Dan for the commission questions.
The only question I have is where does the funding come from?
Funding for what? Which, which piece?
That pot.
All of it?
Are those all SDCs? Is there money in the budget?
It, it's definitely gonna be a wide array of different funding streams. As you know, Chair Ellsworth being involved, we, we have tapped into a wide array of funding sources, whether it's local government grants or other funding streams. We've received state funding for several projects. We've, you know, received fees in lieu through development, working the planning department. I do want to give planning, the planning department massive kudos in the involvement. They kind of loop, you know, our department in. I think, you know, we are very fortunate within the city, we are, that we, we don't play in our silos. We are very cross-board. So, you know, Dan walks in the office, says, hey, there's this development, let's talk about park improvements or other things. And so those, those types of opportunities have been very beneficial for like, you know, Dove Landing and others that you have seen come across your desk. So in the way of community center specifically, that one is obviously a big one. That one is gonna require some, going onto a public vote. Currently, we have $15 million from the state of Oregon through a local lottery bond grant. That is on the table for that. If, and then we, the City Council did allocate an additional $5 million to partner with that out of the Urban Renewal Fund. So that would bring down that possible $60 million price tag. We're still in the process. That hasn't been nailed down because community center is very modular, and we're in the process of doing community polling and seeing what the appetite is because that, we could take out certain components of that project, but there is $20 million on the table basically spoken for, for that project. The, the kind of linchpin to that whole piece is we have two shots at that funding to be approved. So we're going for November of this coming year for a bond. If that- If that doesn't pass there, we have one more shot to basically get the the remaining of the funding passed by the voters, and that'd be May of '25. If it doesn't pass on either of those times, then that $15 million allocated from the state would then go back to the state because we wouldn't be able to. So it's kind of a use it or lose it. So that is kind of that high-level piece, again, SDC fees and other things. We are trying to be very fiscally responsible with that, kind of speaking to that. The Boone's Boone's Crossing Park, we did allocate some funds toward that. It was, we, we had to kind of put a number in our budget early, got the cost estimates back from the Land State Architect, and they're they're much higher than we were anticipating. And so we're probably going to be pushing that project out a little bit further because we're hoping to go through that local government grant program and apply it for, our goal is to apply for a million dollar grant from the state of Oregon for that and do a 50% match. So we don't want to deplete our SDC, you know, pot, deplete it now. Development is hot to trot now, or we're taking advantage of it, but that's eventually going to cool down. And there's been years that there wasn't much in that fund. And so we want to be good fiscal stewards of that and make sure to maximize those dollars. And I feel as a city, we really do try to do that in all avenues, finding additional funding streams to make those things happen.
You said bond coming year, you mean 2024?
Yeah, so it'd be the presidential election, November 2024 would be the first time it'd be placed on the ballot. So yeah, there'll be more information coming with that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Can I, I was just gonna, and this is even more a question for Jesse because we often get the how are parks paid for? And it's, it's a really good question. Setting aside the community center, which is sort of its own baby. It's a separate project, its own separate bond that would pay just for that. I can't guess the percentage. I'm going to look to Jesse for it. But sort of the way I think of it is we have these sort of puzzle pieces where we start with this master plan that says, this is where we need parks. These are the amenities that the community is looking for in those parks as general cost estimates for them in all these various areas, to meet all these different needs. From there, we, right, we tally up and collect system development charges with development when they come in the door. In fact, those were just modified. I think they're going to affect next week. They had another recent modification to those. Again, fees in lieu, land dedications, all those things are directly impacted here with what the planning commission does looking at development approvals. We get access easements. That's what allows the Mill Creek Trail Plan to go forward. Right? The SDCs that get paid, get paid directly back into these pieces. We have development that happens next to a park. There's been a couple of them we have down along Par Road, and we have some park improvements happening in the park directly related to it because there's a nexus and a connection. So the planning commission plays a big role in that. But the truth is, beyond that, I, again, I always wonder, there's very few parks that we, sort of the city says, we paid for all the parks and the entire improvements. What Jesse and his team does is they take this plan that we have, we put it together, sketch out exactly what we need, and then we put all the dollars that we can together. And then he goes out and he finds matches for it. And it's those matches that really make it happen. There's very few parks that are, oh, we just completely funded it and built it ourselves, and it just rolled through. He, but we need that seed money. We need that funding. We need the land. We need all the pieces together, and then he can put and do his magic and get us that, all the extra cash that it takes to make those things happen. That, and it's just, it's exciting. I always love looking at parks master plans. You know, we do utility plans, and I don't get excited about sewer plans, but I love looking at the parks master plan. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, and you know, it's really, it is all about partnerships. You look at the, you know, Library Square Playground. That was, you know, there was some funding in a specific library fund that kind of sat there unused. We allocate those. It was a very minimal amount in the way of that total project when we were looking at it. And so then we were able to compile that with even, that's a perfect example of kind of a smaller scale improvement that we did in a park, right? So that was compiled with, I think it was $25,000 from our local Rotary Club. And then we also were able to go and get another $50,000 so we could do that fun grass surfacing, safety surfacing in there from the Marion County Health Department and several other agencies in which we're just trying to find these pieces and compile these things and donated time and work all of those different components that we we put into place. And honestly, in the way of like larger scale things, at least in my tenure, we're not really active in going and purchasing land on our own. That is not how we see developing out parks as the best avenue. That's not how we, you know, we really want to be able to put those dollars back into the system in other ways to serve our community. And so the amazing things to the Planning Commission and the Planning Department and the different PUDs and things that have came through that we've been able to acquire, you know, an increase in our parkland, but, you know, about 25-plus percent of parkland in the past three to four years because of those PUDs. So we have, you know, Dove Landing that will be dedicated to the city soon. That's an eight-acre parcel that we'll start to maintain. But the the developer put in all those, granted, it was SDC credits that paid for those things, but having them actually develop those pieces is a much better benefit to the city because of what our costs would be doing it. Davis Bacon and different things that drive up the cost significantly versus developer that has the equipment, has the things on on the ground to do those things. So it's really kind of this nexus of all these different things, and it depends on each project and which avenues we go out for funding. But we're always trying not to do our, we're trying to do our best by not putting it all out there at once. One side note, I do want to point out that Justin May, one of our Recreation Park Board members, is here in the audience. So thank you, Jess, for the support. So, but yeah, any other questions?
You know, I always forget this, and it sounds terrible, but part of what made Legion, part of what helped Legion Park move forward was a million-dollar contribution from from Amazon. It's funny, it slips my mind because, oh, it's just six figures. But there's a lot of big dollars involved in Amazon. So again, all these pieces do work together, and it's, and it's hard to get them to go together. But that's, that's what, it all costs money, right? We don't, we don't pay for the parks with user fees. That's not how it works. It's all the other ways we make it work.
No, but when you put it that way, you know, I, I remember when Amazon came before. I remember the Dove, the Dove Crossing and all those things we, when we're approving new apartment complexes. And we're saying, well, where is the playground for the kids? And we'll give you, we'll, we'll say, okay, we'll give you the variance to the three parking spaces if you build a community spot. The green, green areas. So.
And I think that's really key. This is kind of outside of my scope. But I think we did try to incorporate that in part of this plan is, it's really important to point out that, yes, there's public land, but like, if you look at FHTC, like, they have an amazing kind of green space and playgrounds and basketball courts. And onsite, they have these amazing amenities. And so, so having this kind of collaboration of HOAs or different things where it's privately owned, publicly owned, and having these amenities on a whole is, I think, what makes us kind of, and having those planning pieces in place to require those things because it might not be feasible for someone to leave that site and go to a park that's, you know, a little ways away, even though we continue to try to close that gap for, you know, walking sheds and things. But just kudos to everyone who puts that work in to make sure that those amenities are more accessible onsite, as well as improving our current park system as a community at all. So, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Comments? Concerns?
Thank you so much for the work that you've been doing on this. And thank you as well for serving. I know what it's like.
Well, I just wanted to remind everyone, this is a legislative amendment, so it does go to City Council for their approval. So we, we only do a recommendation here at commission level. I have a recommended motion on the screen for you.
Well, I believe I still, I would take it that you've done testimony in favor, but is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the legislative amendment? Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of the legislative amendment? Okay, seeing none? Any further discussion?
Not for me.
Okay, I am going to go ahead and close the hearing. So one last time, any final questions for staff or anyone in the audience? Commissioners online, any further questions?
None for me.
None for me.
We can deliberate. And if nobody has any deliberations, I would entertain a motion.
I move the Planning Commission recommend that City Council adopt the Park and Recreation Master Plan and updated goals and policies as part of the comprehensive plan amendment based on the staff report.
Have a motion. Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Please make that recommendation to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair of Commissioners.
Thank you, guys, for all your hard work.
Oh, absolutely.
It's a fun stuff.
Yeah. Do we have any business from the commission? If you want to make a request?
Hey.
Or if you want to take it offline?
Maybe you do it right. Oh, about the mural?
Yeah. Well, that's, oh, you're going to bring it up because that's business from the commission. Very good. In that case, any updates from staff?
Just a reminder that we will be having a meeting. At the, what is the date for the first, my math's terrible. The, I'm looking at the two attorneys who have better calendars than me. Second Thursday of the month.
February 8.
February 8, thank you. It's going to be the, we have a sign variance for the Aware Food Bank. If you hadn't noticed or hadn't gotten, picked it up in the, in the news, the Aware Food Bank, which burned down probably 18 months ago or so, was rebuilt in the same place. Big coalition of different partners helped put that together. The city helped partner with them as well. Fantastic group. They just, I think, officially opened this week. Great operation. We're happy to see it burned to the ground before. And glad, glad to see it going. They need a very minor sign variance we'll bring to you. Once. It is a beautiful building. The building does look great. We'll talk about how the sign doesn't technically meet our code, but I think it looks pretty good aesthetically. And the other thing, one of the mentioned for the next meeting outside of that is I thought I would, I might put a technically a work session on there. And I wanted to talk, it's, I'm not sure exactly what to call it, sort of a feedback I'm looking to get from the Planning Commission about sort of ways staff can, you know, make the meetings go a little smoother, get you better information, improve our staff reports, improve our presentation, just kind of things. It's just a chance to sort of think of it as an informal roundtable kind of way to say, here's some kind of questions I have about the way things are operating. We don't get to do that too often, but that should be a pretty short meeting. So I think that'd be a nice time to have it. And I'm going to put together some overall training for everybody. I might touch on some of that at the next meeting, but that's sort of ongoing. It's land use training, training on findings, conditions, all kinds of fun things. And what I had heard was maybe, it might be nice to talk about. I always forget that people sometimes don't understand the full breadth of the sort of development process from A to B, from the day someone walks in the door of our office and says, I'd like to put together a subdivision and put up homes, you know, open a new flower shop, whatever it might be, and how they work that through the system, which often involves this group and certainly involves our zoning code that you're involved with directly, all the way down to their building permit, getting their final occupancy to open their doors. I thought it'd be good to walk through that. I think it's worthwhile. I can sort of talk about how we do it here at the city and what the, I like to think of it as the touchpoints that you all have in there. I think those are often helpful. Which, what sort of the world we work in, it's beyond just planning, but the work you do really affects all those other areas too. I think it'd be, I hope it's instructive. You don't need to prep for it or do anything else ahead of that meeting. Keep an open mind, how's that? And the, we have a arts and mural committee here at the city. Ooh, I'm going to look to McKenzie or even the Chair or Vice Chair, who all know the details of that committee even better than me. But essentially, they, they're authorized by the City Council to consider and hear various art projects around the city, and they mostly focus on murals. We have a lot of murals in town, and they're all required to go to the mural committee. They do a few other art projects, such as what's happened over at Library Park, the Small Park, Dahlia Park, I think it's called, across, across the way. The murals at the Pix Theater, the mural, the, I was going to say that, the color and the script that's on the water tower. So they're involved in all these art mural items around town. These are essentially sponsored by the city in many, many cases. And this Arts Mural Committee meets once a month approximately. They hear these, and there's an opening on that committee. You're welcome to speak up on it and advocate for it. Either, either of you, you're both very familiar with it. I know. I know you're on it. I should have cornered. Advocate for someone to join and be involved. They're looking for a volunteer for the committee. I can send anyone any information on it if they would like some.
There's need some young people in the committee is my suggestion.
Oh, good. Then I can't volunteer.
You graciously volunteered a great deal of your time to that, I know. Commissioner Corning appreciated it.
Commissioner Corning has been on that committee for several years now and wants to pass the baton. I'm already on a, the DARs Committee, which is the downtown area revitalization. Otherwise, I would consider it, but I think some of our newer members on the commission might, might find it an interesting opportunity.
It's not a, a big time commitment because we do most of the work in the committee, which is one hour, and the meetings are at four o'clock, I, I think, on Wednesdays once a month. And most of the work is actually done right there. And it's mostly hearing the progress is being made and making decisions or recommendations or, or discussing how, what, what the committee might like.
There's, I want to say there's probably, there's usually around 10 different active projects they're looking at, whether it's, you know, there's a, there's a monument, a memorial piece that's going in at the fire station. There's a sort of this fun bison project going in at the school. There's a roundabout art piece that's being looked at, at the, where the, in front of the Amazon property. We're looking at a couple of mural, new murals downtown. I can't think of some other kind of active, fresh ones. Those are the ones that they're currently looking at. But they, they sometimes come fast and furious where we're looking to do a, right? The pics got knocked down. They wanted to put up that, that fantastic mural of kind of recreating what that streetscape looked like. The Arts Mural Committee spent a long time on that, sort of going through. They vet the, the applications that come in from the different artists that make proposals. They provide comment, ultimately make the approval that gets recommended to the City Council to make decisions on.
And they're usually long-term, like the Buffalo, I don't know whatever happened with that because I missed a couple of meetings, but it's some, I mean, I would guess most of them take months. Six months or more, maybe.
It's often a funding issue. Technically, the money from that comes from the urban renewal area, so it needs to be an urban renewal project unless it, which is mostly downtown, but it can stretch to a few other areas, which is why, that's why most of the art comes from. But I think of the, the fantastic mural at the Colony, Own Tony Dodd Building, that was done, obviously privately, but that went through the Bureau Committee because it is a mural for their comments and recommendations on it as well. So they really get to touch on a lot of different things. No commitment at this time. I'm looking at everybody else other than, other than the two people in the room. So I'm looking up at the screen. But if you're interested, I'm happy to provide just more information.
We didn't sell it, apparently.
I may have someone who may be interested.
That'd be great. I didn't have anything else.
All right. Anything else from anyone else?
Just one brief update. As you know, City Attorney's Office has been going through transit with the Department of Art and City Attorney McKenzie coming in. And so moving forward, McKenzie is going to be staffing the.
City Council?
City, just the city, yeah. And then I will be staffing these planning commission meetings moving forward. But she's still available to you.
Well, congratulations and welcome. So anything else for the good of the order? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
All second.
Great. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Right, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.